Thank you for being here at our 2024 annual town meeting. If you could, make sure your cell phones are off or silenced, please. That would be very much appreciated. We will start off by reading the warnings. Two, Gary Taylor, a resident of the town of Parsonsfield in the county of York, state of Maine. Greetings. In the name of the state of Maine, you are hereby required to mark and notify the inhabitants of the town of Parsonsfield in said county and state qualified to vote by law in town seats to meet at the town office at 634 North Road in Parsonsfield on Friday, the 6th day of September, 8/24, at 3:00 PM to act upon Articles One and Two. The polling hours are 3:00 PM until 7:00 PM for Article Two. And to notify and warn said inhabitants to meet at the town office at 634 North Road in Parsonsfield on Saturday, the 7th day of September, 8/24, at 9:00 AM to act on Articles Three through four, set out as follows. Article One, to choose a moderator to preside at said meeting. Moderator election did take place yesterday. Gloria Hermans was elected moderator for the election part of the town meeting. She then appointed Norman Blake as deputy moderator. Norman will moderate this part of the meeting, so I will now pass it on to Norman.
Thank you, Danielle. Good morning.
Good morning.
I think the first thing we do traditionally is rise together and show our respects to the flag, my name, all those who are willing and able. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks very much. Before we begin, I'd like to recognize Jen for a brief statement.
Good morning, everybody. I just want to thank Ed. This is his last Select Board Annual Town Meeting for 10 years of service. And over on the table, we have a cake that says, "Thank you, Ed." And I invite everybody to enjoy whatever we have over there. And for me, having been elected last year, for the past year, it's been a pleasure. I've learned a lot, and a lot of it is owed to Mr. Bauer, so I just want to say thank you.
Ed, thank you, Ed. It's a hard job, a lot of days you've handled it well, to my smart observation. Okay, let's move on to Article Two, to elect by secret ballot the following town officer for selectmen and assessor and overseer of the four, three-year term. Aaron Boglin, 89 votes is the winner. Harvey, with 43 votes, is also on the ballot. For Director of MSAD 55, three-year term, Amanda budget with 17 votes. And there were quite a few write-ins with one or two votes. Planning board member for a five-year term, James Barron, with 91 votes is the winner, and a few one-vote write-ins. I'm going to hop down to, and I'll get back in a minute. Director of the Piper Free High School Fund for a one-year term, Pam Price, with 10 votes is the winner, and following up on quite a few write-ins with half or fewer than that many vote, so it's good that you have options. Director of Piper Free High Fund for a two-year term, Pam DuTremble is the winner with six votes and a number of write-ins. And I think these are posted outside if you want to check the write-ins. Secretary Treasurer of the Piper Free High Fund for a three-year term, Thomas Winter, with 83 votes is the winner of that. Now, there are still the Budget Committee members. I'd like to, because she understands that a whole heck of a lot more than I do, I'd like to ask Danielle to explain that. You want to come up here?
Oh, it doesn't matter.
Okay, speak right up, please.
So, basically what's happened is there are three Budget Committee positions that are open to write-in votes with separate sections on the ballot. There were more write-in votes in the first position on the ballot for Budget Committee than there were others on the two sections further down on the ballot. I need to consult MMA Legal on Monday morning if it's the candidate who received the most votes on the entirety of the ballot, or is it the candidate who got the most votes per section on the ballot for those three positions. I will post results as soon as I talk to an attorney, and I've already talked to the candidates this morning that were affected, and we will see what they say on Monday.
Thanks, Danielle. You're fortunate here in Parsonsfield that you have so many people who are willing to step up. Let's move on to Article Three, to see if the town will vote to combine the various non-dedicated sources of income into a general revenues account from which it will pay its expenses as authorized by this town meeting. Do we have a motion?
No motion.
Move the second question. No questions. Here are none, all those in favor of Article Three as read. Please raise your hand. Those opposed. Article Three is accepted. On Article Four, states town will vote to authorize the selectmen to use up to 50% of unappropriated surplus ballots to reduce the 2024 tax commitment. Move the second question, comment.
Yes, sir. And exactly how much is this surplus? Because it looks like we overspent our budget by several hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, we don't have an exact number. That comes from the auditor. They recommend what we can use when we go to tax time. I'm guessing it's going to be on the order of $400,000.
All right.
I mean, that carries over from year to year.
Okay.
Okay. Further questions, comments on Article Four. Here are none, all those in favor of Article Four as presented. Those opposed. Article Four is accepted. Article Five, states town will vote to authorize the selectmen to borrow from the dedicated town fund in anticipation of taxes, set about not to exceed 75% of the town funds and be repaid with appropriate interest. Move the second question. Here are none, all those in favor of Article Five as read. Those opposed. Article Five is accepted. Article Eight, states town will vote to authorize the municipal office to spend the unappropriated surplus accounts. The first pair of eyeglasses I have ever bought in six decades that don't work as well as my elderly eyes. I'm not a happy boy. Article Six, thank you. To see if the town will vote to authorize the municipal offices to spend an amount not to exceed three-twölths of the budgeted amount of the 2024 annual budget during the period from July 1st, 2025 to the annual meeting 2025. Have a motion?
No motion.
Move the second question, comment. Here are none, all those in favor of Article Six as read. Those opposed. Article Six accepted. Article Seven, to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to close all unexpended appropriations and overdrafts into the unappropriated surplus account. Move the second question. Here are none, Article, all those in favor of Article Seven as presented. And those opposed. Article Seven is accepted. And the page here is Article Eight. This Article Eight, to see if the town will vote to expend the following dedicated funds in accordance with state and federal law. They would be the plumbing and building permit fees, animal control monies, the L-RAC money, FEMA grant monies, the main emergency management, authority reimbursements, American Rescue Plan. No, do we have a motion?
No motion.
Move the second question, comments on Article Eight. Here, yes, Marion.
Couple things. It has really nothing to do with the article. It has to do with the fact that we're not consistent. Since 2019, the Budget Committee votes were put in yes and no. And this year, we went backwards to just yes. So, in other words, the public thinks the whole Budget Committee voted 100% yes for an item.
What does NA stand for?
Yeah, that's another one that changed this year. It wasn't NA before that.
Is it non-applicable?
Yes, it is, and that's because it's not a budget item, this particular one.
Right, but consistency. We used some of the term last year.
None felt this was better.
Well, then stick with it.
Okay, it was confusing. And Jen was going to say, when it says none, people want to know, well, why didn't the Budget Committee recommend something?
Well, what about when the Budget Committee recommends no, and you don't put anything down? Yes, not the whole Budget Committee, but members of the Budget Committee.
Marion, on the town report, there's the budget. And if you look to the right, it will say Budget Committee, five yes, three no, seven yes, one no.
But it's not, it's not in here.
Correct, it's on the budget itself.
Right, that...
It's misleading.
Is misleading, exactly, misleading.
Okay, we'll look at that.
Take it under advisement?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, Article Eight on the matters of the article itself. I heard the questions, comments. Here are none, all those in favor of Article Eight as presented. Those opposed. Article Eight is accepted. Article Nine, now. Article Nine, to see if the town will vote to raise and/or appropriate the sum of $207,924 for the compensation for the town officers and for employees for the ensuing year. And to save everybody the misery of hearing me go through these lists of numbers, what I have just read is the article. All the columns and figures are explanatory matter that you can probably read better than I can, and I will not bore you with that. So, the article is, to see if the town will vote to raise or appropriate 207, 924, etc. Do we have a motion?
No motion.
Move the second question, comments on Article Nine.
I was on the Budget Committee, and we were just verbally told, basically, we weren't told salaries, we weren't told anything to really make a decision. I voted no, but I'm going to vote yes today because I've done my research on my own and called all the towns around us, and they were straight up front in what their salaries were and what their bays were and everything. So, you know, not prepared. I mean, we should have been given more than a verbal, we should have had a written piece of paper like you did when you decided that you all voted yes. We didn't have information.
I don't know why you didn't have it.
Well, we didn't.
I believe that under 20 general government O1 wages, that you had that page.
No. Oh, here? I'm talking about at the Budget Meeting.
At the Budget Meeting.
No. If we did, it wasn't shared.
We'll take it under advisement for next year?
Can I just add one? That kind of thing, Marion, if you would bring it up at the time to the board, we'll address it. I mean, we'll get you, get those things sorted.
Well, you don't want me to go back to the fact that we didn't have much...
Yeah, we're working on it. We're working on that.
If you're not prepared, then we can't be prepared.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, further questions, comments on Article Nine. Here are none, all those in favor of Article Nine as presented. Please raise your hand. Those opposed. Article Nine is accepted. Article Ten, to see if the vote, to see if the town will vote to raise or appropriate the sum of $56,000 for the compensation for a full-time, 40-hour code enforcement officer for the ensuing year. Do we have a motion?
No motion.
Move the second question, comment. Marion.
I'd like the Select Board to explain why we need a full-time CEO. I mean, I've been told, but I want you to tell the public why you feel we need a full-time CEO. And then I'll address the fact that you want, you haven't had a vote on the marijuana issue, and I believe you go in the cart before the horse. You want someone full-time before you... We didn't pass the medical marijuana.
I think, Marion, I think the marijuana is not within the scope of this particular article.
Yes, it is. But I'm explaining to you...
I don't believe so. I would ask the selectmen to explain the need for a full-time CEO. That's a fair question.
Yeah.
I should say Select Board.
That defines. The town's growing, more buildings, more houses, more permits being given out, not enough hours for the CEO to take care of what he needs to do, especially the paperwork end of it and the reports that we need to get on a monthly basis that we would like more of. Dave, anything else you want to?
That's basically it.
That's not what I was told. The board told, I was told that it was because of the comp plan and the fact that we're now going to have marijuana.
Well, definitely the comp plan is part of it, but we don't, and it's a possibility.
And...
But we don't know that yet.
Having been on the planning board and knowing how the housing permits go, that's not a consistent thing. We're going through a high right now. You will not find probably next year that we have half as many permits, and then we'll have a full-time code enforcement officer.
Be voted down then next year.
I saw a hand here.
Yes, I would like to speak in favor of the motion. We have occasional short and zoning issues along the pond, and I called Jesse, and he is right there, so I am definitely in favor of this motion.
Further questions?
Yes, sir. I also am in favor of the motion. We made a small change at home, and it took Jesse a long time to get there, meaning no disrespect or comment negative. He had so many other witch-like things he had to do, it took a long time. So, that's why I support it. I know how overworked he is trying to keep track of things, not just inspections, but also all the paperwork that goes with it. So, I think it's smart to put a full-time position.
Further questions, comments on Article Ten, the full-time? Jeff, I'll be right with me here in a minute. Jeff.
I go to select board meetings a lot, and a lot of times I hear no CEO report, no CEO report. And then, we're supposed to have it online all the time, and it's not always online. And there's other towns surrounding us that do more detailed work for a lot less money. Just because we don't have a deputy anymore and we want to spend that money isn't a good reason to give everybody a pay raise. It really, I would pause on this. I urge everybody just to take a little breath on this, because there are a lot of towns that do a lot more with a lot less. This is a big increase, a very big increase. And every, there's other towns that the CEO actually comes to a select board meeting, and ours does not come to a select board meeting. And doesn't come to the planning board meetings all the time like David did. When David was CEO, David went to all the planning board meetings. David also added all the permits in the annual town report. And since we've had replacement of the CEO, and David was, we don't have any reports in the book. And I bring this up every single year, and every single year they say they're going to work on it, just like everything else. So, you've heard my speech, that's it. I'm going to be very quiet so we can leave early today, so that's it.
Thank you, Jeff. Yes, sir. I just want to speak about the job itself. I know a little bit about construction, and the job is probably one of the most difficult jobs that a town has. The reason is that there's the code on the one hand, and then there's each town on the other hand, and there is a lot of judgment call involved. Let's say somebody wants to take down a wall in their house, all right? What is the code? The wall is not a load-bearing wall, but it's a wall. It's a judgment call on the part of the code enforcement officer whether or not a permit is required. You want an individual homeowner to have the freedom to do to his house what he or she pleases. On the other hand, you want the code to be followed, but there are a lot of judgment calls, and it takes a lot of time to learn that job. It's a thankless job, and if you do it right, you probably get everybody hating you.
Ain't that the truth? Further questions and comments on Article Ten, the code enforcement? Yes, sir.
All right, so at the moment, he's a part-time employee. How many hours a week are we getting currently from?
It varies. He's in the office, I believe, at least on the schedule, six or eight hours a week. He's here more than that, and then he's out in the field as needed.
So, we're going to go, we're going to maybe doubling the amount of time that we have him available to us?
Between a third and half more, yes.
Okay, and then how much of this salary is going to be covered by the fact that we'll get to keep this 75% of the permitting fees that he's currently getting?
I think he averages about $32,000 in permit fees. Now, he won't be getting those.
Right.
To get the salary.
So, that will be...
There's between 32 and 36.
So, that was, you know...
Oh, and the stipend also, yes, it was a $3,000 stipend.
Right, so that would just go into his salary to cover that, so it'll help support?
Yeah, the salary is the salary, and that's it.
Yeah. Okay.
Jeff.
Of course, David, when you were the CEO, did you have an assistant CEO as well?
No, sir. You know that.
I know that.
Yes.
But I just wanted to make sure that everybody else knew that. So, maybe the CEO can explain how it all works and with the assistant.
Well, the assistant works as needed, so if he's needed, he won't work the hours.
Every time I commit, he seems to be here, but, okay.
Tuesdays are days that he's typically here.
Follow right in front of Jeff. You had your hand up a minute ago? Just stretch it. That's okay, too. Further questions?
There's also a built-in conflict of interest if the compensation for the code enforcement officer is from permit fees. It can go good or it can go bad. So, to have the code enforcement officer compensated with a salary is the best solution. And that was...
Okay, that was what we were just going to bring up, that our town attorney felt that there could be a potential conflict of interest when a person issuing the permits and gets reimbursed by issuing the permits. It might tend to issue more permits than he should, maybe some of them questionable because he'd be getting reimbursed for that. And the town attorney, maybe a year ago, spoke to us about, you might want to look at putting him on a full-time salary so that whether he issues one permit or 10 permits, there's no question about whether it was done correctly.
And that is not a comment on our current code enforcement officer.
Jeff.
If you want to talk about conflict of interest, before the CEO became the CEO, he told me that he was for the Wadsworth development because it would create jobs to build houses, and apparently he has some ties to Wadsworth. And then he became the CEO, so that was a little bit of a conflict, because he became the CEO and Wadsworth got what he wanted. And I know it's an old thorn in everybody's butt. Now, I ended up building the houses, Jeff?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Jesse. So... Did I end up building the houses? No, no. No, 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 but you were, that was a conflict of interest because you told me that you wanted, you were for all this building, then you became CEO, and- I never said-
I think we're getting a little off track, but-
Will there be any other compensation other than salary? If you received any benefits from the same work?
It's a full benefit decision.
Okay, so I guess what I'm really saying is that will he still collect on any, how many things he does, or is he?
No.
Okay, no more. So that, so what, just to give us an idea, will the town, from past performance of the CEO, will the town be saving money? Or, in other words, is the town going to get all those revenues now from permits, right? Correct?
No.
I'm asking that question.
Jeff, it was currently, we're currently going to the CEO. Yes.
All the permitting from electrical to plumbing, everything is going to go to the town now. Now, is there any way to follow and track what he's done the last two years?
Well, that's what I brought up before. He's averaged about $32,000 in permit fees in the last couple of years.
So we're going to actually be spending more-
Yes.
For him?
Or a full-time position?
Almost 30-
Double the hours.
Almost double the salary? All right, at least hours. So he's going to, so he will be available to be seen in the town room once a week?
Yes.
Jeff?
Won't we be getting more into our revenue from having him become full-time? I mean, the salary and what he's making, plus what he's getting paid to do when he comes in the office and that, will this increase the town's budget or their income by having it done this way?
I don't see how. I mean, it's-
So we'll be actually spending more than what we're going to be making?
Yes. Yep, it's the cost of doing business. I mean-
But he's going to give us more out?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Exactly.
Right in front of Jeff, yes?
Now, is he going to be required to submit like a weekly report of what he did and the time spent to the select board?
Yeah, I don't have it with me, but if you look in the back of the zoning ordinance, land use development ordinance, there is a code enforcement job description. And we will hold the person to that. And I think you will be pleased with that.
Yes, sir?
Everything has been said, I'm okay, thanks.
Okay. Okay, are we ready to vote on Article 10, $56,000 for a full-time code enforcement officer? I think we are here now for the comment. All those in favor of Article 10 as presented, please raise your hands. Those opposed. Your article is accepted. Now, this makes Article 11 immaterial. As a moderator, one of the things that we hate to see is an article that has not been acted upon. It's kind of like the undead floating in space. So what I would ask is that when I read the article, somebody moves the article, somebody seconds the article, and then somebody can quickly bring up the fact that in view of Article 10's results, it's immaterial. And my guess is you should probably vote it down, thereby putting Article 11 to a decent and respectful grade. So, Article 11, if Article 10 is not passed, the C E O's town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $3,275 stipend plus 75% of permanent fees and all other C E O fees and compensation for the code enforcement officer. Can we have a motion?
I believe that it's immaterial.
It would be easier if you would move the article?
Move it.
Okay, now, we have a second. Okay. Now, I believe you had a comment about the nature of the article?
No, I was just going to say, didn't you say it's immaterial?
Yes.
I suggest that Article 11 is immaterial.
I think you may be right. Is there any further discussion on Article 11? All those in favor of Article 11? Those opposed? Thank you very much.
I just remembered a question.
It's moderator geek stuff, all right? Article 12, see if the town will vote to authorize the select board on behalf of the town to enter into a three-year contract with consolidated communications for a fiber optic network connection and a new phone system starting immediately. Do we have a motion?
The move.
Move, second question, comments? Yes, sir?
Does this include the whole town?
No, sir.
Well, it's no good.
This is for the town office, right?
Yeah, that is immaterial. The fact is, the whole town should be fiber optic, and we should go off of copper. And just for one entity to have it. I mean, this is ridiculous. The town, the town has constantly voted spectrum, and they refuse to wire two-thirds of the town. And we're left out there in the cold. Now, we do have DSL, but it's poor at best. And we can't get a cell phone service where we are. And we've got a phone service, a copper service that's over 50 years old. And I've talked to a lot of the technicians, and I've talked to people at Consolidated, and they say it's so antiquated, they can't keep it going. So if you're going to put an article in here about just servicing one building rather than the whole town, which is what we need, it's deplorable.
A little bit way back, yes, sir? Well, we have quite a history here because we got stuck with not having anybody to manage the infrastructure after Horizon pulled out. And then we got a company that was overextended financially to buy everything. And then they merged, and merged again, and merged again. And my point is this, that Consolidated is probably the worst company that I have ever come into. And I'm just wondering, for this argument, did the town check out Spectrum at least for the town?
Yes. Can I answer that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, we got Spectrum and Consolidated were the two companies we spoke with. Got quotes from both of them. The Spectrum quote was almost double the Consolidated quote. And actually, it would have been more than that because that only included a limited number of phones. And each phone that you added to that quote was $25 a mile. Yeah, I, after that, I know what's happening.
Yes?
David, what is the select board's plan? Because we've even involved the P U C over our way. And we have what Todd was just talking about. We have a 50-year-old faculty that services us. And literally, the mice are in there eating the particular liars all the time. They might eat number eight. My phone has to be number eight, I'm out. You're next door, you've got a phone. It's dangerous. And they said, "That's it. This is what we're going to do as Consolidated." And that's when I got the P U C on the line. And they said, "You've got to get the whole town involved." Spectrum, I think, requires X amount of houses per mile, is that true?
I believe it is.
See, and it's something like goddamn 25 or something. I am a mile. I'm the 13th house in, in three and a half miles. I will never get it. And I've even used my cellphone because it says for emergencies only. And they work, it works. But I've called 911 twice just because, to make sure. And the minute that they answer, I say, "It's not an emergency, it's not an emergency." And they're like, "Okay." But then they brought on a police officer that I have to talk to, which is fine. He heard the whole thing. I don't blame you, I don't blame you, man. The P U C said, "The next call I make is not going to be funny." And that's not a threat. That wasn't a threat to anybody, to Consolidated, to anybody. But they don't want that happening. And it's not for me if my neighbor calls. So we've really got to do something. And I don't know what to do, so-
Can you talk about the quote that you got a couple of years ago? Speak up, man.
No, this is when we first got Opera Funds. The folks from the government, we got $209,000. And we were trying to figure the most constructive way to spend that. One of the options we said was, we looked at Spectrum, and they have, I don't know, 250 houses right down there. But they're all obviously centered in the village and right around that area. So we looked at, like, taking Province Lake area as a separate entity and what they would do to put, you know, Spectrum in. And after they stopped laughing, they said, "Oh, you're looking at least $250,000 to $300,000 just to do the Province Lake area." And we said, "Well, we probably can spend that more than our allotment from the government, from Opera. So maybe it'd be better just to do other smaller chunks and get some other stuff done." But it's very expensive. We had a, it was a telecom committee of about four towns three or four years ago. And that was trying to come up with the same type of thing. And this is when it was mentioned, the companies were buying each other out and changing. And really, we're disadvantaged because we're in the company. We don't have, depending on who you talk to, 20 houses per mile, 10 houses, an apartment house, whatever. They want so many houses before it makes sense for them financially to hook up. And realistically, it's probably not going to happen here unless there's going to be some new technology or something comes out that can help us.
So we had, Jesse's probably done quite a few of the permits because we've got some houses over, what is that, Molton Hill Road? By Brian Paul. There's like three or four new houses that are in there. Those people don't know that. If I mentioned 10 bucks, they wouldn't have moved here. Do they know?
Jeff? I know for a fact that people who have moved into an area have been shocked at the fact that they don't get, and a lot of them move here so that they can work from home. Some of them have gone to Starlink. I've called Spectrum. I'm a half a mile from the last house. And we've had at least three new houses come up in the past. As a town, maybe it's worth a call to say, "We are getting these new buildings, and you need to come reevaluate us." Spectrum is looking to put an underground cable in by Province Lake to one of the neighborhoods that is by the golf course. We have heard that they are trying to get their fiber optic in. I don't know where they're at in terms of the entire town. But you're right, I think that, I think we need better internet access.
What are these people going to do that have just built right now?
I do know some people get Starlink and-
Where do you get that from?
Elon Musk, it's a satellite. It's 150 bucks a month, and I think it's 600 bucks the first time for the downlink satellite thing in New York. But yeah, the solutions, but they're not cheap. Gentlemen in the back, yes?
Yeah, I've heard on the meeting this year that the infrastructure bill and state both have funding to address this exact problem. But I don't have any other information. I think what's coming out in the meeting today is that this should be a priority for next year's vote. Because there is universal dislike for what we have now, to put it mildly. And it's a big issue. There are funds available. The nut to crack is how we get at those funds.
We're getting way off the actual substance of Article 12. However, the subject is important enough that I think we can color outside the lines a little bit. Before we get to voting, I'd like to hear from a couple people we haven't heard on the matter of Article 12. Gentlemen in the, in the room, sir?
State, I have a comment, who am I? We have transit in two towns. The other one has services Spectrum and much better service than when we have a Consolidated. That's just a comment. The person I have is the two words, Starlink, and immediately-
Cliff, are you going to repeat this question? Can I answer his question?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Could you repeat that question? I didn't- No, he wanted to know, he wanted to know what the starting immediately meant in the article. It just means that we'll enter the contract immediately. It will take some time to get the actual infrastructure in place.
So there is no time in the contract?
It's a three-year contract.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what you're saying.
I mean, when does it end, when?
You don't start when we sign it. We won't be paying the full amount until we get everything in. Yeah, yeah, no, we're not going to pay for something we don't have.
Yes, sir. So what is that full amount? Is there a guarantee that it won't go up during the span of the contract? And how much better is it than what the rest of us in the great kind of bars sealed down the lid with? And you does the town office deserve better than what we have?
Okay, let's see. If I can remember them. First of all, those out front here, please don't chatter much yourself because it's hard to hear everybody else, okay? It is a three-year contract at a fixed price. Okay, the only reason it would change is if we increased or decreased the number of phones that we got. Each phone is $10 increase. Second question, what is this?
Was what, how much better is it than what currently you're living with?
Oh, in terms of actual throughput on the internet, it's probably maybe better, is all I can say. Not a lot better, but better. In terms of the phone system, it's infinitely better. We'll all have mailboxes. You'll be able to call people directly if you want to, things like that. And there's a third part.
Is, why do you get to be special and have better than the rest of us?
To serve you, believe it or not. Again, the phone system is going to be much better. We'll have voicemail. That's going to be the big thing, in my mind, for each person. Second of all, fiber is always on, unlike copper cable. That goes down when you lose power. The only time fiber would go down is if lines, if the actual lines were down. So the fact that we have a generator, as long as there are no lines here between us and their network hub, we can still operate. Whereas now, if we lose power, we lose internet. We'll also lose phones for that matter. Yeah, even though we have a generator.
But there's to be going through this trouble to work on the town hall here. What's that going to provide to people on, in this area around the town hall?
Frankly, I don't know.
Because all they get, they get, and once they come here, they're going to want to use 10 or 20 hours. And then the rest of it's gone, hope. I mean, again, I think what Lesso had said is that whether we vote for this or not, we have to put a lot of energy into dealing with the fact that a lot of the town is struggling. And we can't just kind of say, "Okay." We actually have to do it. I, for one, believe that the pressure will increase if it isn't for the town right now. And the county, and the select board, and everybody will work harder to make sure we can get something for our town. can get something for our town.
I don't know, don't we own the polls? Don't the town own the polls?
No, CMP doesn't.
Yes.
I just want to say really quickly, since to me, that there are a lot of people in this region that have a lot of knowledge about internet and things like that, have a lot of concerns about the lack of it, lack of cell phone and internet in this town. I'm really concerned that, I listen to the select board meetings every week, and they have a lot on their plate, that maybe coming out of this meeting, there might be enough people that would be willing to form a committee to work together on, for the town, on behalf of the town, to see what could be done, to put pressure on the various companies, to bring better services to the town, instead of always expecting the select board to be able to do that, because they're already working on so much stuff. Maybe they could come together as a group to do that.
Take another advantage?
Yeah.
Okay, I like that.
Yes, Dan?
I had to hear a little bit about this, since my son is, lives in Stowe, and is on the committee there to try to get broadband to that area. And he said, "It is, there's money out there, but there's an awful lot of towns applying. It's very competitive. You're dealing with high-powered companies, and general small towns are not high-powered negotiators. So, you need a good committee, and you need some support from outside, and you're going to be fighting elbow-to-elbow with every other town to get it. So, if you can get multiple towns together, that helps, but it's not something simple we're going to solve here. It's a big job."
Also help from your state representatives. They, they know we're talking. Daniel?
Can the select board just kind of mention why we need this upgrade for Trio?
Why did we just upgrade to Trio? No. Her, her question is why we need this for Trio, or the point she's making. The software that's used throughout town offices, for catering, or real estate, or motor vehicles, or just about everything, is going to a web-based design. They will no longer have a local version, which is what we're running now. So, right now, if we lose power, we can theoretically run some of that software locally. However, once they go completely to the web-based version, we won't be able to. So, if we have the fiber connection, and we have the ability to stay on even when power is out, then we'll be able to continue with our full operation.
Yes?
I am a comment, I'm maybe old-fashioned. I've lived in the town of Berne all my life, and I don't take the telephone, make good care of the landlines. Maybe the landlines have gone out, but you ride the road, you look at the stuff that's on the line. Centerville, power lines go out, they come around and fix that. If they phone them, they never come around. And I'd say, if they ain't able to take care of the infrastructure, I'm not going to pay a phone bill. I live without a phone bill, I have the roof to my life, 86-year-old. I give one without a phone. I won't even have a cell phone. I tried one, and I finally smacked it on the floor. When I, when I got a roadrunner, that night, my big phone hit one one button. They don't want to do that, you know, my hand.
Friday, you should say that, I've been there. Okay. I, I, again, we're getting off the specific topic, topic of Article 12, but again, it's, the topic of internet access is very important. And I think it's, it's, it's worth diverging for a while. Way to that.
Do we move the question?
I think we ought to. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Okay. Article 12, see if the town will vote to authorize the select board only half of the town to enter in a three-year contract with Consolidated Communications for fiber-optic network connection and a new phone system starting immediately. All those in favor of Article 12 that's presented? Those opposed? The article is accepted. We're having the same misery over in the town of Baldwin, and it's for all the same reasons. Welcome to Maine, you're way less than. Article 13, see if the town of Passon Field will vote to join the main public employees' retirement system, abbreviated M-Pers, Main-Pers, as a participating local district, effective November 1, 2024 this year, and A, to offer a regular plan in B.C. What's B.C.?
It's just their plan designation.
Oh, it's what they call, regular plan in B.C. to the town clerk, deputy town clerk, select board assistants, and code enforcement officer, effective November 1, 2024. And B, to exclude all other employees and appointed officials, including part-time employees who work $20 per week, or less, seasonal employees, temporary employees, and all elected officials from participating in Main-Pers. Do we have a motion?
No.
Move and second it. Here and done, all those in favor of Article 13 as presented? Those opposed? The article is accepted. Article 14, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the following sums to cover general governmental expenses, and you have a listing of these in your, in your copy of the warrant. Do we have a motion? So, move. Good move and seconded. And I should, I should state that the total amount listed in Article 14 is $328,208. Questions, tell us, and Scottson? Yes, sir?
Do we do any kind of zero-based budgeting for this stuff?
Select board, do we do any kind of zero-based budgeting for this stuff?
Not really. We basically, we look at requirements, and we look at requests.
My only concern is that without zero-based budgeting, this can be a very slippery slope.
This can be what?
A very slippery slope. In other words, we spent as much last year, we're going to spend next year without any kind of audit of why we spent that much last year.
Well, we do. Zero-based in this particular case, like I just looked at professional services, $40,000. Now, in effect, we, we would say, let's go, let's go to zero. That's a good start. But then we know we have three or four ongoing legal issues, and we know how much we spent for those last year, and we know they're probably going to continue this year, because the court system is abysmal. And we, a new issue might come up that we've been talking about, like cannabis. Now, there's going to be a town, special town meeting and all that good stuff, but you folks have been talking about that, and we've been talking about that for a year and a half, and we've had to have some legal advice on what we can do and what we can't do. The worst thing I think that the select board can do is try and put an article in or a warrant in that you can't enforce, or it's illegal, and it's, so that's where we need our legal guy. So, yes, I think, John, we do start at zero, for some things.
You just described zero-based budget.
Right, and that's what I think for most of them. For the ones that, you know, are applicable, I think we do that. The ones we have some choice.
Further? Yes, Dan?
And I think you should understand, the budget committee also gets the request from the selectmen for this year's, and they also get what was spent last year. And we do basically look to see, are there any real reasons why this should stay as this number, or if things should be moved up, so some, some attention paid to that. It's not detailed, but it's at least overview.
Further comments? Article 14. Article 14, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate the following sums to cover general governmental expenses for a total expense of $328,208. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is accepted. Article 15, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate $1,000 for comprehensive planning committee expenses. Move and second it. Questions, comment? Yes, sir?
Aren't they done? So, why is there going to be more questions?
Are we ever done? Yes, we're done. Some of this will cover the cost of printing copies, and if the town wants to bring it to the state for approval, that will probably be some more cost with, we work with Southern Main Planning Development, so just sit in there, in case.
Okay, we're also involved, and we're also the Southern Main Planning, you're right. It's like we're never done. Anything else on comp plan expenses? Here and done, all those in favor of Article 15, $1,000 for comprehensive planning committee expenses as presented? Those opposed? The article is accepted. Article 16, to see if the town will vote to raise inappropriate $5,000 to be placed in the sidewalk capital reserve fund. Move and second it. The Scottson? Yes, sir?
So, how much money's in the reserve fund now?
Is it in the report somewhere?
Yeah.
Page 20.
Page 20, thank you, Danielle.
Page 20, Danielle said, keep up on this stuff.
It's the second one in the right-hand column. Looks like $15,661, dropping off two pennies.
That works. And a follow-up question, how much money do we need to, to fix them, or do what we're hoping to do with this money we saved? Is there a plan?
There is. A lot of need, yeah. The number is a lot higher than that. DOT will pay, I think, for half of them. We're talking about the particular, the sidewalks, from the Stanley building down to the old town office.
Okay, Danielle.
I believe DOT will pay half of it. I think we're looking to need at least twice what's in there right now.
Mary?
You said only to the old town home. Tons of people walk all the way to Dogleg General. There should be a crosswalk there. Seriously.
Yeah, we can talk to DOT about that.
Yes. I'll get you in a sec, Jen.
Well, in the winter months, when it snows, you can't even walk on that sidewalk. You have to walk in the street, because it's not clean.
State offices, homeowners have to shovel it.
Jen's recognized to speak.
There is funds available in terms of grant money to do sidewalks, and because I didn't do this initially, I just want to congratulate Mr. Aaron Bogut, as being the new planning on select board member, and I know that he's anxious for grants with me.
But this needs to be done, because you can't walk the street, because the snow piles are high. And if it's 25, you have to walk.
We don't have maintenance to do that.
Jen says we don't have maintenance.
But are the people that own the homes, on those, supposed to clear? It's not yet done.
Further questions, comments on Article 16, sidewalks? Here and done, all those in favor of Article 16 as presented? Those opposed? Article 16 is accepted. Article 17, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate the following sums to cover protection expenses. And, we have a listing of these, the individual accounts, for a total of $179,541. Move and second it. David?
A quick comment, where references in the second item, Article 12, it should reference Article 14, our professional, our services.
Okay, so if we insure liability in professional fees, it should say 14, not 12. Everybody make that change for posterity. Further comments? Cliff?
Somebody should score on, how many fire hydrants are in the town of Passon Field, and what is done every day?
21, I didn't warn him to.
Yeah. Just over 20, yeah.
And Cliff asks, what do you do as a tenant?
We don't do anything, we just pay money.
The, the amount is set by the state. We have no say in that. They do get flushed and maintained by the water company.
Most of the time, it's from the key to fall down?
Yes, all of them.
All of them.
Yes, so.
Anything else on Article 17?
Just articles, I need this clarification.
Excuse me, please, please be quiet, it's, it's difficult, we all have it, well, most of us have elderly eardrums, and it's hard enough. Yes, sir, please.
Fire department expenses are $81,000. Now, all I want to understand is, does that involve anything to do with Article 18 and 19? Because when we look at fire and rescue expenses, we're looking at $192,000 for fire and rescue, and I'm wondering why that can't be put into one item to make our job as citizens a little
They could be.
Well, not 192,000.
I don't know why.
$192,000 for safety.
Yeah, well, Article 19 is for reserve, so that one needs to be separate. But Article 18, could certainly be combined there.
Anything else on Article 17? Yes, Jen?
Street lights, I have it right up in there. I guess we're going to be changing over LED at some point, and I just want people to know, like you said, I wouldn't mind with the LED, but they are super bright, and I know that CMP says they can control the wattage and stuff like that, but basically, it's going to be pretty bright, and people are going to notice it. Well, maybe they won't notice it, but I notice it. It's brining, I like the little orange glow myself.
I like the sodium vapor.
Just saying, I'm just sending out the warning, you know, I did say something.
Anything else on Article 17? Yes?
Yeah, I, you talked about the, the fire hydrants being flushed out in the town, and I know the difference between a standpipe and a, and a fire hydrant. Are those standpipes that are around the town, and the ones that are either hitched to a river, lake, or whatever, or a tank, are they flushed out by them?
Yes, I have one beside my driveway.
Right, so, so, but there's no car, or what is the, fire department just?
Fire department does that, that's part of their budget.
Yeah, okay, so that would be part of the, what, the $81,000?
Yeah, I mean, they use it as a training exercise.
To blow the frogs in the mud outs?
Okay. Jen, Jen?
I'm trying to be short on this. So, fire hydrants, every year we go through this, and it's a lot of money, and all the towns have to pay the same thing. Is there any way that the select board could get other towns to petition the state to get this vote? It's a lot of money. Even if we save $5,000 or $10,000, you know, all of, you know, it'd be beneficial, but this seems like we'd be in gouge, and that's already the same.
Maybe, Jen would like to form another committee to organize all the towns that are paying this high rate, and then go up to the state and say, "We want a little bit of discount." How about a new committee, Jen?
Okay. Are we ready to vote on Article 17? See, no other discussion, all those in favor of Article 17, for a total of $179,541, as presented? Those opposed? The article is accepted. Let's go to Article 18, see if the town will vote to raise inappropriate the sum of $101,808 for socupate rescue expenses. We have motion? So, move. Move and second it. Discussion. Here and done, all those in favor of Article 18 as presented? Those opposed? The article is accepted. Article 19, see if the town will vote to raise inappropriate $10,000 to be placed in the socupate rescue capital reserve fund. Move and second it. Discussion. Yes?
On the heels of a successful vote and the lost article, I'd just like to take a chance, if I could, to speak, if that's not out of one.
Are you, are you a resident of Passon Field?
I actually am not a resident, sir.
I would ask unanimous consent, this is, this is state law, this is, this is home unit, pay the nets. I would ask unanimous consent of the town meeting to allow the... unanimous consent of the town meeting to allow the non-resident to speak to this august legislative party. Go ahead.
I'm currently the president of Socpi Rescue, I just wanted to thank the citizens of Parsonsville for your support over the years, and again, this year, your financial support is much appreciated. Select board, thank you for your support, the budget committee, working through the budget committee this year. Again, was an interesting, pleasing process, so I just want to say thank you. I wanted to make everyone aware, we don't give the opportunity very often to introduce new members to the board, but you have a current representative that sits on the board of directors, he's actually here today, he's a new member to Parsonsville, Rich Patnold. We would like to have up to three members on the board, Rich recently joined us, we currently need two more members for the board, but if anyone in the town of Parsonsville had any concerns or questions with regards to the operations or any medical concerns that you might have, Rich Patnold would be your representative, and he's a very smart man that's moved into the community, and he'd be a great resource for the town, so, again, thanks for your support, and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Fine folks, but you just don't want to see them unexpectedly. Mary.
I'd like to thank the fire department and the rescue for coming and speaking to us so that we understood everything in the budget committee, and thank you for showing up today as well. We really appreciate it, it helps us make our decisions.
Way to go, okay. We're back to Article 19, further discussion on Article 19, $10,000 for the Socpi Rescue Capital Reserve Fund. Further discussion? Here and done, all those in favor of Article 19 as presented. Those opposed. Article is accepted. Article 20, to see if the town will vote to raise inappropriate the sum of $23,000 for the professional valuation of real estate changes and maintenance of property records for the town for tax assessment purposes. Do we have a motion? No move. Move it seconded. Discussion. Mary.
We need this badly. One, we're not getting 100% of our, what's that?
Homestead.
Homestead exemption. And I've been doing a little research, I've seen houses for sale, then I go back and I look at the valuation in our book, and it's astounding difference between what we charge for taxes and what the houses are being sold for now.
I think we'll get into some of this, into the next article, too. Point well taken. Further discussion on Article 20. Here and done, all those in favor of Article 20 as presented. Those opposed. Article 20 is accepted. Article 21, to see if the town will vote to raise inappropriate the sum of $23,000 to be placed in the revaluation reserve account. Move it seconded. Discussion. David.
First of all, we have a little administrative error here, but we have to go with it. This should have been 30,000, I believe, which is what we had initially talked about, it's what the budget committee saw, but since this is what's printed, printed, this is what we have to go with, can't raise, no, this can't raise. Second of all, this will get us, I think, maybe five-eighths of what we need for the revaluation, so we're probably looking at sometime either this year or at the next annual town meeting, looking for a larger chunk to actually do the revaluation. We're talking 200?
219, we got.
Yeah, 219,000 is the, was the estimate that we got.
So we have about 100 in the nation, 14 saved up.
Jeff, did you have something?
I was just gonna say what Dave did, is that the committee?
Say the same thing.
They recommended the $7,000 more.
Jeff.
Just a recommendation to the select board, next time we have a special meeting, maybe we could raise this, maybe the 7,000 that's missing, and maybe a little bit more, because we really need to have the reevaluation done. I know nobody wants to have those reevaluated, because unfortunately, these houses can't go buy themselves for $529,000, and they're paying $150,000.
Good idea, that would be entirely in order for a special town meeting as well. In the white glove.
What cracks me up, and we've seen the truck go by already, they don't stop and look at the houses, they just drive by and say, oh, okay, well, this is what it is. If they're gonna do reevaluation, really reevaluate these properties instead of just to drive by. They're being paid to drive by. They're not, to me, that's not doing your job. And we're paying them, I know.
I agree, but we haven't had a reevaluation since 2009.
What's the guy doing driving down all of that?
He may be doing what was applied to Article 20, which is the annual maintenance. If somebody has a permit, they go check on it. If somebody's torn something down, they go check on it. But that's just the annual stuff. If there's been no change to your house, then...
You know, if he's just gonna drive by and say, okay, same house, and go up the street.
That's not what they do for the whole reevaluation. We haven't had one since 2009.
Well, that's fine, I mean, I can understand that, but if he's just gonna drive by and make a check bar because you haven't added anything, and there's no permit then, why pay him so much?
Way back, or, sir.
So my question is, or really a comment, the city of Bangor went 29 years between reevaluations, we're only in the, you know, we've got 10 more years to go, at which point I probably won't be paying taxes. And no issue that we talk about at town hall meeting or special meetings scares me more than reevaluating the property in the town. I lived through it once in where I came from, I'm not from here, I don't pretend to be, I love being here, and I came here for a reason. But they came and they reevaluated the property, and our taxes in that year went up 125%. None of us here can afford that, and I know that that's not anybody's plan, but I understand the math, yep, this is our budget, we're not gonna spend anymore, but you look at what we did with the $100,000 savings we had from not paying the deputy this year, well, we spent it on other stuff, because, ooh, well, the money's there. Well, now, potentially, we're gonna have all this additional money, the mill rate's not gonna go down, even though it could, it could, but there's an article here to, you know, circumvent the mill rate rule again, it's been on the ballot for the last four, five years at least. And it's always, oh, well, just this year and next year we won't. Well, we're here next year, and you're asking again. So I don't want to give you guys any more money to potentially reevaluate my property. Personally, I believe that the tax rate or the valuation of property should be based on the last sale price of the property, so a ton of people have paid $500,000 for a camp, well, then they paid $500,000 worth of value for the camp. The place next to the Mason Hall, it's on the market for $200,000. It isn't worth 60, but if someone's willing to give that person that much money, then they should pay the taxes that they were willing to do, because they went in with open eyes. And for those who...
Yeah, that's enough, yeah. Okay, I'm just gonna say this once, I get very frustrated because what you started saying but didn't quite complete the thought of was that, yeah, we only need a certain amount of money, and that's exactly right. We set a budget, and it's gonna go up every year, we have inflation, folks, and in the last five years, inflation has been ridiculous, but we have a budget that we have to gain through income through the clerk's office and real estate taxes. That number is not gonna change whether we're valued at 65%, which is what the state says now, or 100%. The mill rate will indeed go down to compensate for that change, and we won't get any more money because of it. The money will, the people that pay, the homeowners, indeed get a redistribution somewhat, right? Now, I wish we could go on the last sales price, too. Unfortunately, state law says it has to be fair market value. We're stuck, okay? But reassessment is not going to raise any more money for the town, period.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, David. There is a state law that requires fair market value. The problem with a fair market value for any kind of assessment is that historically, market value has fluctuated dramatically. If, for example, during a recession, the market value of properties went way down, now it's going way up. So if we have professionals do the valuation, they make the best call, and I'm surprised that we haven't done a reevaluation since 2009, given the state law that requires it.
Further discussion on Article 21. Here and done, all those in favor of Article 21 as presented, please, Rachel. Those opposed. The article is accepted. Let's go to Article 22, to see if the town will vote to raise inappropriate the following sums to cover health and sanitation expenses. We have tip and fees, garbage and recycling for a total of $330,500. We have a motion. No move. Move it seconded. Discussion. Jeff.
I'm trying to make it short.
That'd be good.
Recycling.
Recycling, yes.
Recycling, yeah. It's a shame that we're not recycling more, and I've said this before, too, maybe those take it on the trash where people are throwing out cardboard, and it just doesn't pick it up if it's in a regular barrel. And I've said this before, that if, we're just not recycling enough. Other towns are doing the paper bag, and I don't want to see paper bags, but I do want to see more recycling. And I know probably everybody in this room recycles, and everybody who's not in this room maybe recycles or maybe doesn't, but recycling, and I don't want to start a committee to look around in people's trash barrels, but recycling, it's almost, it's almost a waste of money to recycle. And I know it's a good, it's a good feeling to recycle, and, you know, the plastic and stuff, it's great, we're getting it, it's out of the envir, you know, we're doing the right thing, but it's, you're sending a truck around, the whole town, you pick up, I don't know what the percentage is, but it's like, what, every 10th house you pick up recycling, or maybe, maybe more? If the recycling guy was here, or Melon had the contract, if he's here, he'd explain how bad it is. But it's pretty bad, we're not recycling enough. Maybe the town should have, like other towns, a recycling bin at the town hall, and maybe one at the salt shed, and maybe, you know, something like that, because most of it's all, you know, single-use anyways. I know everybody's afraid of somebody throwing a TV in the dumpster or whatever, but, you know, you just take it out, and that's it, recycle the property. We need bins, you know, we need something where people, you know, who just want to throw stuff.
Yes.
I'm just going to mention, if you look on page 23 in here on the recycling report, you will see that Parsonsville is now recycling at least 10%, and I congratulate everyone that is recycling. And if you read the report, you'll see we're doing much better than some of our neighbors.
Cliff, did you have your hand in the air, or were you just stretching? Okay. Jeff, quickly, please.
I firmly believe that we are not doing enough on recycling, and I know Florida, people have to bring their trash to Florida, but that doesn't mean that tri-counties recycling, because a lot of times they just, they just throw it in the regular bank, so their numbers could be up if they actually recycled more, and then make us look a little worse, but we are not recycling enough, and I, and it's the Amazon effect, it's all been valuable.
One question.
I fully support all the efforts that Judy has made, even to point out that I think we're maybe up to 10%.
Please speak right up, so we can hear her words.
I completely support the efforts that Judy has made, even, you know, even that we're 10% recycling. But, you know, our hands seem to be tied, we don't have options, and who else may do a better job of collecting trash and recycling roads? At some point, that 230,000, 250,000 waste garbage is gonna become 400,000 or 500,000 in the next five or 10 years, and the town needs to, at some point, say to all of our members that we can save a lot of money if we recycle, and so, here's your recycling bag, if it's not filled, again and other, if they're not filled, your tax is gonna happen very great, because we can, it's gonna keep, it's gonna put us out of business, is the way it's going. I think that's the reality, we have to recycle at least 50 to 70%.
Further comments on Article 22. Here and done, all those in favor of Article 22 as presented. Those opposed. Article is accepted. Article 23, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate the following sums to cover winter, road maintenance, and sand and salt expenses. Where will the maintenance contracts, sand and salt purchase, and we have the DOT to do on the Province Lake Road area for a total of, yeah, $603,500. We have a motion. Move it seconded. Mary.
Where's the road commissioner?
Yeah, where?
The road commissioner doesn't have anything to do with these.
It's winter maintenance.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll wait, now I'm saying again.
This is the New Hampshire DOT thing covered, you asked, how did 153 to eat and made?
David.
Yeah. Yes, it turns out that is not Main Route 153, that's a town-owned road. It always has been, Main DOT got...
My father used to plow slow and forty, they had the floor, that's all I know.
Yeah, I don't know how Main DOT got involved in that, but they were plowing it for a while, and we should be thankful. New Hampshire DOT obviously does their side of it, because the line runs right down the middle, and they've agreed to do both sides for this price.
Yes.
A question on the cost of Province Lake Road, it says two seasons?
Yeah.
So that's two winters?
Yeah.
That's what we're, we pay 7,000 a year?
Yeah, I don't know how it's broken down, but...
Yeah, so it's gonna be, what, this winter and next winter, is that what you mean? The other question is, there's been a lot of surveying going on over there, New Hampshire DOT. Have they talked to the town at all? I kinda talked to the guy doing that, I think they're trying to determine whether that whole road is in Maine versus, I mean, he went way back, way back to the original brass plugs. You haven't heard anything?
I haven't heard anything.
Okay, just something that might be coming along. I think he's been, he's been there quite a lot, I think it's all done, but...
Thanks for the heads up.
Anything else on Article 23? Here and done, all those in favor of Article 23 as presented. Those opposed. Article 23 is accepted. Article 24, to see if the town will vote to...
Would you mind if we take a break, because this is halfway through the 48 articles?
This suits me fine. I would ask, we'll do this without benefit of a motion, can we have the meeting's approval to take a, what do you want, seven or eight minutes?
Your call.
Just...
10 minutes.
Well, let's say, let's make it easy, because we'll reconvene at 25 minutes out, when the big hand's on seven, and the meeting will not be adjourned, the meeting will be in recess until 10:35, and everybody cricks their legs, and those chairs are high, but some of them don't have it.
Parsons Field Town Meeting will return to orders. The big hand is a little past seven, so we'll wait until we make our decision. Article 24, see if the town hopes to raise and appropriate the following levels to cover highway and bridge expenses per the following. We have general maintenance and paving and series for a total of $588,776. We have motion.
No move.
Motion seconded. Discussion. Yes, sir.
I'm just looking at this.
Please speak right up.
Question I got is, I'm looking at what we spent last year and I'm looking at what the budget is this year. The 340, we spent, what, almost 500,000 last year, going back at what we spent. We're gonna have to have some checks and balances to hit this budget this year. And my other question is, I'd like, the road commissioner's no idea, he hasn't been here since we elected him to take questions. You almost wonder if he's got any interest in it other than spending money. I just wanna, I've been slightly getting information from him on what he's doing, what he expects to spend, you know, monthly or weekly or something, to have some control over him on the budget.
Jed?
I've been working with Maya because we're working on the April 4th storm for FEMA reimbursement, so I get to talk to him pretty frequently. I did ask him to be here. I did ask him about his paving plan as well, but I agree that would be the best thing for the town. We need a plan. I know he did say Cram Road and Weeks Road were next on his list.
Well, my question is, he's the one that knows the conditions of the road. He ought have, he ought be able to give you a yearly budget on X number of culverts, paving, all these things, and give you, based on what he thinks it's gonna cost to do it. I know you can't estimate storms and all those things. A lot of it we can reimburse from FEMA, but some type of information from him, so you guys can have an idea of the cost and some type of control over the cost, other than just having him do the work, send us a bill, and we just explode it over our budget. It's a, I looked this up, it's 14, 15% of our budget, what this is, so it's a big part of our budget.
It is.
This gentleman is basically asking for transparency, which we don't get from this current road commissioner. He doesn't have to talk of meeting, he doesn't even tell them, he made it clear, I don't want to attend any public meetings, and occasionally our select board, like Jed, has a chance to speak to him, but there is transparency, great advice.
Yes, sir. Sounds right.
Okay, well, this is a problem we have with these elected officials who seem to be, I mean, they just do what they want to do. We had this problem with the last two road commissioners. It should be mandatory that the CEO reports to the planning board every meeting, and if he has an excuse not to be there, it should be a sick excuse, not that they have to go somewhere with their family or something. This is a responsibility of these elected and appointed physicians to be at the appropriate places to explain themselves. We don't know what Tuck is doing, and I say Tuck because that's the company he owns and that's what he uses. I see the trucks going by all the time, but I never see him stop to do anything. And he's not here today, he should be, it should be mandatory that he is here, and he should have a period of time within this meeting to speak about these two particular articles and explain himself. And he should be mandatory at least once or twice a month to report to the selectmen with a report. This is the same thing we have with the sheriff department, who are very disingenuous. Never given us any information as to where the hell their sheriff was or what he was doing.
You missed our subject.
Well, I'm not an office subject.
Yes, you are.
But the fact is that these people should be reporting, and you are the people who should be demanding it.
I think your point is well taken. Is there further discussion? Yes.
Maybe what should be done is him have to report to the selectmen, to the planning board, or whomever, and, you know, paying till you get a receipt for what he's done and you've seen it.
There you go.
That's what should be done. That puts him on the hot seat.
Yes, sir.
I agree with these people that you haven't seen Meyer around here all the road itself. You got two good employees, and while they do work, especially on the dirt road, they do good work, and they're out there working. He ought to be there with them. I agree with that. And I will recommend them for the work they do.
Further comments on Article 24. Jeffrey?
Oh, boy. Yeah, I pretty much agree with everybody else. In some of the towns, the road commissioner actually goes to the select board meetings and discusses his plans for the month. I know probably this road commissioner reports to the select board maybe privately, but this should be done during the select board meeting, which is televised, so then we can all know. We also need a detailed report on the roads. It'd be nice to know how much money was spent on different roads, just to keep track and so that we know what's being done. And maybe during a select board meeting, they could be discussing how much money we spent that week on roads, being, you know, just to let people know, oh, we just spent 10,000 on this road, we spent 5,000 on that road. I don't care about little tiny patches so much, but just to let people know.
Yes.
He thinks, I think we have had a very good control over Meyer, and with the exception of last year. The previous years, he'd been right on his budget, if you look at, look back at the numbers, you know, we're getting a few bucks, but I mean, on budget. Last year was a complete disaster because of the two storms, and there's an article coming up about that, but we'll need some money for paying for storm repair. So, but I agree with, I don't want to say everybody, that's a little extreme, but we have asked Meyer to have a meeting in the wintertime to go over his plans for the roads. In other words, these are the six or seven roads I feel are the worst, this is how much it's gonna cost to fix these roads. To get some input from you guys, my road's terrible, whatever, get that list adjusted. And then, he has his six roads, the budget, he meets with the budget committee, goes over the budget committee and says, how much money do I have? And they say, $300,000. And everyone says, that's fine. He looks at his list and says, okay, for 300,000, now, emergency excluded, obviously, I can do these first three things. And that's what we expect him to do. And that's how we tried to set this up, it hasn't come to fruition. He does send us bills every week with hours and the equipment he's using and where they're working, and he has been checking in with our, with Debbie, our administrative assistant, as to what's going on and how much money is being spent. And that's why, up until last year, it's been in pretty good shape. Last year is, well, last year was last year, so.
Marion, I think I saw your hand ahead of your gentleman friend.
Why do we have more control and more from rescue, the fire department, than we do from our own employees? We pay them. We don't get to tell them what they need to do, or maybe you don't tell him that he needs to.
Jeffrey?
I know that it was mentioned that the road commissioner, most of the, now, I don't think he, well, I'll just spit it out, road commissioner has never gone in front of the budget committee.
No.
And if he needs more money, he should come to the budget committee, like fire and rescuers, or if anybody needs money, they should come to the budget committee. But the road commissioner has never come to a budget committee, and it has been, and there's an idea from the budget committee, not everybody goes to the whole meeting, you know, not, we don't have ninety every single time, but, you know, it would be nice to have the road commissioner come to the budget committee and explain, and then we can explain to him what he needs to do or not do.
Further discussion on Article 24. Here and done, all those in favor of Article 24 as presented, please raise your hand. Those opposed, the article is accepted. Article 25, see if the town hopes to authorize the selectmen to appropriate up to $98,804 for the maintenance of roads from current year LRAP money. And yet it's 98,804. Do we have motion?
No move.
Motion seconded. Discussion. Here and done, all those in favor of Article 25 as presented, those opposed, the article is accepted. Moving to Article 26, to see if the town will appropriate the sum of $164,000 from undesignedated fund balance to pay for major stone damage incurred during the 2023-2024 fiscal year. Do we have motion?
No move.
Motion seconded. Discussion. Chad?
What is a storm damage? What, you know, the storm damage, would it, I know the storm took down trees and stuff like that, but can you explain what was done?
Selectmen, what are we talking about? Washing the roads?
We're talking about washouts, culvert replacement, trees down, debris pickup, brush removal, chipping, hiring contractors to stage the area and remove the debris. That happened in April, I believe it happened in January, and I believe it happened in December as well.
Yes.
Thank you. So, this is money we didn't get back, storm damage, a lot of times we get money from FEMA to do this, so he did additional work that FEMA wouldn't approve, is that right?
FEMA has declared the disasters, but it takes months and months for us to get 75% of the total reimbursed, state will reimburse us 15%, and the town is responsible for 10%. If we see that by the end of the year, we'll be, I'll feel happy, I'll be lucky.
So, if we get the FEMA money, it will offset this cost, some of it?
Yeah, it goes into an account, yeah. Yep. Hopefully, we won't have another storm before that.
Yes.
So theoretically, we'll get, what, 90% back? Theoretically, as far as the government goes.
Eighty-five.
Oh, all right. You said 10% for the town.
10% for the town, right.
Right, okay. So, but I mean, how far behind are you right now? Is it 23 and 24, or do they still owe money for 22, or?
We've caught up with 22, except for one potential cost for an engineer, and we're working on the 24 now.
So, apparently, seems like we're gonna be behind the eight ball from here on out, because we won't ever get caught up, because each year, there may be another disaster in the town, another disaster, another disaster, so we're not gonna ever get caught up.
Very possible.
So what, how do we protect from never getting caught up?
Well, David?
Well, I'm not recommending this, but what you can do, we're past the articles now, but you could limit the amount that could be spent, other than emergency, on the road funds. Now, that's gonna upset a lot of people, because everybody's upset with the condition of the roads, as they are aside from storms, so, you know, it's a six of one, half a dozen of another.
We have to fix the road. I mean, you think you all understand that, and you just can't stay in your house for four days until the snow melts or the trees disappear, you know? But, there's a, how can I put this? There's a limit, and when the, when you get over the budget, you're spending money that obviously, not the budget committee, you know, really can plan for. You don't want to increase the budget to cover the contingencies that may not happen, because if the contingencies don't happen, that just means we've taxed you folks too much money. The idea is the budget and the spending come out equally, so I think we have to treat the exceptions as exceptions and say, and do exactly what we're doing. Jed worked with Meyer and FEMA, kept track of the money, took pictures, and gave much money back this weekend. We got 90% back of this, that's what, about $16,000 it would cost us, so.
We're not in bad shape. It doesn't look like it's gonna be in reality.
All right, good on you.
The good land just doesn't look like it's gonna work, because FEMA, as well as Parsons Field, as well as every town in this country, is not gonna be able to keep up with what's going on.
But we have to.
We have to take our chase laws out, get out of people in the town, fix the roads.
All right. I don't know any other option we have.
We did that.
We're not even gonna do it after, they used to do it, right, Joe?
Jeff?
Okay.
Briefly, please.
I'm first, I'm gonna try. When there's a storm, I usually have marking ribbons in my car, so that if you mark, when there's trees down on the roads and stuff like that, I don't really feel it's my job to be doing that, but as, as a citizen concerned about safety, I'll go around and mark, put ribbons on the trees that are hanging over the roads and stuff like that, so if you see a green ribbon, it's probably mine, but I think it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be everybody's job, but it shouldn't be the road commissioner's job as well, to mark these trees that are hanging over all the roads or on wires, or, you know, just, because there's an awful lot of trees still sitting on the wires, and that's, I'm gonna be sure.
Something for all of us old retired guys to do. Further comment on Article 26, storm damage. Here and done, all those in favor of Article 26 as presented, those opposed, the article is accepted. Article 27, see if the town hopes to raise and appropriate the sum of $15,000 to cover the general assistance program. Do we have motion?
No move.
Motion seconded. Comment? Chad?
Do we get reimbursed by the state on the money that we give to general assistance?
Yes. Yes, we do.
80%?
Oh, I don't think it's that much. No, absolutely not. I'm gonna say 50.
Yeah, I think it's 50.
It's an option, 50, 80, what?
Last one I heard was 50, and it sounded appropriate.
All right, okay. Making sure that we get some of the money that we give out, that's all.
Oh, yeah. Yes. Yes, sir. Yep.
Isn't there a law on that money coming out of the old Bartlett-Del Fund? Somebody answer that?
Chad?
It used to be used for assistance.
The Bartlett-Del Fund is set up specifically to offset the cost of schools.
I know the five or three April fund that you.
As is the Elijah Fund.
The Bartlett-Del Fund, I remember years ago, they always used that for general assistance.
But in school general assistance, I don't, I don't remember that.
Basically, we, through articles and the boards that run those funds, we get monies each year, they go into our general fund, quite frankly, and then they get used from that, so some of it's gonna go for general assistance, but nothing is earmarked for general assistance.
Okay. Chad?
So, so last year, our budget for this line item was $5,000, and we ignored it, and we gave up a little over $8,000. So, now we're gonna raise the budget to $15,000, so we're gonna triple what we expected to pay in last year, and I'm all for when people need a helping hand, we should do that, but I don't mind that we necessarily ignored the budget last year to do what we did, but my concern is, now we've tripled it, and we're gonna ignore the budget again, because more people are gonna be like, ooh, they got way more money. And again, I'm not trying to say that as a collective shouldn't help, but from a budget standpoint, I think this is how we get out of control, because then, two years from now, we're gonna take this 15, and we're gonna say, you know, we're gonna double what we spent, and I just don't know that that's gonna be easy to a lot of living.
Chad?
If you look back in '22, '23, the general assistance budget was a lot higher than 5,000, and it wasn't spent, so that's why it went down last year. The amount of money that's been given out for general assistance in this past year exceeded the 5,000 budget, and people have to meet criteria, and there are a lot of people who need help.
Sure.
Rent assistance, food, what have you, but they do have to meet specific criteria. People can't just say, hey, there's a lot of money there, let's apply. There is criteria, and that criteria is state-controlled, and we're seeing a lot more people come in asking for it. We ask for more, the budget committee recommended a little less.
Marion?
That amount, if I'm correct, that came to the budget committee was from the select board's assistant, a request with no explanation, and she's not here either.
Further discussion on Article 27, general assistance. Here and done, all those in favor of Article 27, $15,000 as presented, those opposed, the article is accepted. Article 28, see if the town hopes to raise and appropriate the following sums to cover cultural and recreational expenses. We've gotten the library, something for Tuck, FEMA, the RAC Council, and the Historical Society, for a total of $10,500. Do we have motion?
No move.
Motion seconded. Discussion. Here and done, all those in favor of Article 28 as presented, those opposed, article is accepted. See if the town hopes to raise and appropriate the following sums to cover social service expenses, and the totality of the whole thing is $8,883. Can we have a motion?
No.
Second? Motion seconded. Discussion. Here and done, all those in favor of Article 29 as presented, those opposed, article is accepted. By the way, I forgot to mention whoever made those drawings over there, they might be some left at the end. Article 30, see if the town hopes to raise and appropriate the following sums, some of miscellaneous expenses, these care of veterans graves, the Legion Post, and gravestone repairs, for a total of $7,500. Do we have a motion?
No move.
Motion seconded. Discussion. Yes.
So, in the past, I've come to ask about how would our cemetery, which is these Parsons Field Cemetery on Weeks Road, and we're a private nonprofit, finally want to save, but very small, and, because I've been denied, but we have veterans, we have older graves, early 1800s, there's a lot of stones down, there's old trees that keep falling over and breaking off, and I'm just, once again, wondering if we have $6,000 asked for promoting and care of veterans graves, why is it that I can't get a little money for help with our cemetery? We have two. We have the one that's like, got 1800 burials, and then we've got the NX, which has got veterans. We've got old trees that we need to take down, I've got an estimate of like $4,500. We're desperate, immediately trying to get.
What, have any comment on that matter, David?
Sure, we are looking at this. We learned last year that we can actually spend money on private cemeteries, however, it's very restricted, and the way that it's distributed is very restricted, so we basically put a policy in place that said, when we get to a point where we're ready to go further with this, we will accept requests from people and address them as they come in and go from there. We're still trying to catch up with the town cemeteries, and that's not a small.
Okay, my other question would be, every year you ask for money for cemeteries, what happens to the money that you don't spend? Is it kept in a cemetery account, so that you build up that?
As of a couple of years ago, we set up a reserve account, we have an article that says that that money will roll into the reserve, or stay in the reserve, if it's not spent, yes.
Okay.
That will be noted on page 20, I think it is.
Okay, I saw Marion's hand first, do you want to be further?
I'm saying the same thing.
I'll be short. We have to start with the town cemeteries first, unfortunately, and the $6,000 could be spent pretty fast if you cut all down, cut down the dead trees that are on the cemeteries right now, and do some destumping on some of these roads, excuse me, on some of the cemeteries. So, if we started spending money, it should be done for the town cemeteries first, and that $6,000 will disappear pretty quick, and there's a lot of broken stones in our own town cemeteries, so.
Lots.
Charity starts at home, I guess.
Yeah.
Further discussion, Article 30, cemeteries.
And how many town cemeteries are there?
Three.
Three.
There's three?
Yeah.
Okay, the rest are all private cemeteries?
Yes, of which there are, they number 165.
Okay.
I just wanted to comment, for several years, I've had a problem with voting directors for a local cemetery, but I think that one is basically tough, tough to afford it. They have, and in that one, they've had for years, that they live off of, and they do a pretty good job taking care of the cemetery. And there are a hundred little cemeteries all over town, and it gives very little, it doesn't get paid.
Further discussion on Article 30, cemetery. Here and done, all those in favor of Article 30, $7,500 as read, please raise your hand. Those opposed, article is accepted. Article 31, to see if the town hopes to raise and appropriate the sum of $2,882 for the town's share of funding the courtesy boat inspection station at the World Home Boat Bank.
No move.
Motion seconded. Discussion. Here and done, all those in favor of Article 31 as read, those opposed, article is accepted.
If anyone has any, wants to give any information, I'll share it with them afterwards.
Okay. Anybody needs to know about courtesy boat inspections and keeping the billfold out and all that stuff?
Got it.
Okay, article 32, see if the town hopes to appropriate the refunding fees for snowmobile registration, to be split equally between the Stockton Valley Snow Drifters Inc. Snowmobile Club and the Route 11 Streeters Snowmobile Club. Said some to be the amount refunded by the state for the prior fiscal year, we're told is $543. Money is to be used for purposes such as trail maintenance, construction or purchase of equipment and materials for the maintenance and construction of tread, which are open to the public, free of charge during the winter season. Do we have a motion?
No move.
Motion seconded. Discussion. Chad?
Just a second thought, I see the snowmobile, the street isn't that, but what about the ATV clubs? I don't, do they get anything back? Or do we get any money from the ATV clubs?
From the ATV clubs?
Yeah, I was just wondering.
You get money from ATV registrations.
My chair, I don't believe we do.
Yeah, I was just kinda curious, it's like, whoa, you know, you give it to the guys in the wintertime, the snowmobiles and what about the ATV guys?
I think that's two different worlds.
It probably is two different worlds, but just, just so that, well, what about TV guys?
Yeah, they all have something to say.
We actually get paid from the state on just snowmobile fees. So it's an actual transaction that says right across the board, snowmobile fees for that year. So that's what we get.
Is it, is there any?
There's nothing for the TV.
There's nothing for the TVs?
They didn't have a total lobby, I guess.
Yeah, all of the lobby.
Further discussion, Article thirty-two, snowmobile fees. Here and done, all those in favor of Article thirty-two as presented. Those opposed. The article is accepted. Article thirty-three, see if the town will vote to appropriate any franchise fees received in the prior fiscal year from spectrum charter to be given to TV two for the purchase and maintenance of equipment and for operating costs. It looks like we're talking about five thousand seven hundred and seventy-two dollars. Do we have a motion?
I move.
Motion seconded, discussion. Here and done, all those in favor of Article thirty-three as presented. Those opposed. Article is accepted. I, I'm moderating a number of towns and I see TV two in a lot of places. They do a fine job and I think it's a, I think it's a good, a good way to spend the money to educate people in, in the broadcasting business. Article thirty-four, see if the town will raise and appropriate six thousand dollars, that'd be two thousand dollars each, to offer, and to authorize the selectmen on behalf of the town to enter into a mutual aid agreement with the town of Newfield Fire Department, Town of Limerick's Fire Department and the town of Effingham's Fire Department for fire protection and Effingham Rescue for emergency first response medical care in the western area of Parsons Field for the ensuing year. Do we have a motion?
I move.
Motion seconded, discussion. Here and done, all those in favor of Article thirty-four as read. Those opposed. Article is accepted. Thirty-five, Article thirty-five, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate fifteen thousand dollars to be placed in the municipal building capital repair, repair fund. Motion seconded, discussion. Here and done, all those in favor of Article thirty-five as presented. And those opposed. Article is accepted. Article thirty, Article thirty-six, to see if the town will vote to appropriate forty thousand dollars from the Barclay Dollar Fund, uh, credit to the relief account by vote of the town on March nine, nineteen fifty-three for the support of the common schools and said sum to be applied as partial payment of the school assessment for the ensuing year.
I move.
Motion seconded, discussion. Here and done, all those in favor of Article thirty-six as presented. Those opposed. Article is accepted. And there's one gentleman here who I understand was present at that, that meeting on March ninth and, and nineteen fifty-three. Is that correct?
Yeah, I work with voters today, David, I'm fourteen-year-old.
You were there?
I'm a man, yeah.
Very good. Article thirty-seven, to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen on behalf of the town to accept or refuse donations and bequests that may be offered to the town and if accepted, to spend the same according to the wishes of the donor. Said expenditures shall be in addition to any other amounts raised or appropriated elsewhere for similar purpose. Motion seconded, discussion. Here and done, all those in favor of Article thirty-seven as read. Them as opposed. Article is accepted. Article thirty-eight, to see if the town will vote to establish sixty days after commitment as the date when twenty-twenty-four real estate and personal property taxes will be due and payable and to establish a rate of seven percent interest to be charged on unpaid taxes as of that date. For information, the maximum allowable rate set by the state domain is eight point five percent per annum. Do we have a motion?
I move.
Motion seconded, discussion. Jeffrey?
It looks like we're gonna pass probably everything on the, on the, on the budget. So, um, how much is our taxes gonna go up so that, so, so we figure out how many people won't be able to pay their taxes in time?
That's a hard question. You wanna try it, David?
No, I don't. I don't know what the surplus is gonna be. I don't know where, where we are. Personally, I can't estimate that. I don't know if you folks can.
I, I know we didn't estimate that last year until after listening to them some weeks later.
Don't know.
Yeah, so that's, the budget did go up about two hundred thousand dollars. Well, I'm just, just curious, cause.
TVD. Further questions, comments on Article thirty-eight. All those in favor of Article thirty-eight as read. Those opposed. Article is accepted. Article thirty-nine, see if the town will vote to establish a rate of two percent discount to be allowed on all real estate and personal property taxes paid in full within thirty days of commitment. Motion seconded, discussion. Jeffrey?
How much, how much money did, um, did we lose by giving the two percent from last, last year?
Yeah, I don't have that figure. I remember one, one or two years while I was clerk, it was less than ten thousand dollars, is all I know.
Okay, well, that's a good incentive for people to pay their taxes early.
I keep bringing that matter up over the town of Baldwin, they laugh at it.
No, I'm not just.
I didn't say all of them.
Yeah, sometimes don't, don't offer that.
Further discussion? Here and done, all those in favor of Article thirty-nine as read. Those opposed. Article is accepted. Turn the page. Article forty, see if the town will vote to use the tax lien mortgage method for the collection of unpaid discounted taxes after the expiration of eight months from the commitment date and to establish seven percent as the rate of interest to be charged on all liens until paid in full. The maximum allowable rate set by the state domain is eight point five percent per annum. Municipal offices shall use the special sale process required by, uh, thirty-six MRS, section seven forty-three C for qualified and homestead property. And if they choose to solidify tax liens for closed property to anyone other than the former owners. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Motion seconded, discussion. Jack?
How much money do we make on people that don't pay the taxes on time?
Well, with this thirty-six MRS, section seven forty-three C, we don't make anything. Basically, any funds that we receive over and above taxes, interest, fees and any expenditures, even legal expenses, for instance, um, we have to pay back to the prior owner. That's the gist of what that article is.
Okay, all right.
Yes, sir.
Didn't that, uh, could have, have a, a member of the original family, family that wants to buy it back, they did, can't have it?
Does it extend, extend example or just the original owner, David?
We don't have a policy as such. We would certainly consider it. It would probably be in conjunction with talking to the prior owner, though.
I've heard it, heard it happening, but some member of the, the family, it wasn't really the original owner, they did get a chance at it.
Yes.
But that doesn't really affect the town, we'd have to be, be known to our owners.
In my time, we haven't had that come up, but like I say, we would certainly consider it in conjunction with prior owners.
Further discussion on Article forty. Here and done, all those in favor of Article forty as read. Those opposed. Article passes. I don't know how many more articles I've got down in my throat. Oh, thank you, my dear. Uh, this is my second town meeting this week. On Wednesday evening, I had a special town meeting up in, in order. They had, what, ten, twelve articles? We got through that. Anyway, let's go on Article forty-one, see if the town will vote to authorize the tax collector to accept prepayment of taxes you've collected not to exceed the previous year's taxes. Interest on any prepayment will be zero percent. Do we have a motion?
I move.
Discussion. Jeffrey?
I know, um, we get our tax bills once a year and I know it would be a pain in the neck to do it, um, you know, send out a halfway notice, but it's just a thought of sending a halfway notice saying, you know, your tax, you know, your tax rate if you pay it as much.
Further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of Article forty-one as presented. Those opposed. Article is accepted. Article forty-two, to see if the town will vote to establish seven percent as the rate of interest it will pay on taxes that have been overpaid in excess, in excess of the full amount assessed in accordance with MRSA Title thirty-six, section five oh six A. We need a motion?
I move.
Second.
Motion seconded, discussion. Here and done, all those in favor of Article forty-two as read. Those opposed. Article is accepted. Article forty-three, to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to use monies from the overlay account for real estate and personal property tax discounts and tax abatement, including any interest accrued thereof. Motion seconded, discussion. Here and done, all those in favor of Article forty-three as read. And those both. Article is accepted. Article forty-four, to see if the town will vote to exceed the twenty-twenty-four municipal property tax levy per MRSA Title thirty A. Parenthesis, an affirmative vote will allow this municipality to surpass the twenty-twenty-three limit but requires that the twenty-twenty-four limit be used as a base for next year's limit calculation. Do we have a motion?
I move.
Second.
Motion seconded, discussion.
I believe this has to be my written ballot.
I believe you're correct. Uh, we need a minimum of three written ballots, so if, uh.
We mean have three, you could still have discussion.
Yeah, we could still have, we could still have discussion if you want to. This is, this is state portal, like, whether the gentleman in that wishes to say something.
All right, didn't we, we had the same vote last year? And, and so if we continue to have it, all it does is just let us keep spending money. Last year we said, you know, there's a thing about where you're not supposed to raise the taxes within whatever the limits are. And so we agreed to, to let you spend some more money this, this year. When are we gonna have it stop?
Couple decades ago, the state required that, that towns such as this do that.
Right, to, to help protect us.
Yeah.
You know, so.
It's a.
The real question is what happens if we vote no?
That's a good question.
Good question.
Yeah, I think it's possible that we would have to limit the taxes that we collect and we might have to do some budget kind of.
Sounds like a pretty good idea to me. So.
There, we have a situation back when I was a selectman. And we did, we had to act and had a special town meeting, which basically said, we want to, we have to change the budget. Some of the things you voted yes on will have to be removed or we're going to have to, have to sort of fight together. So it's a, you know, if you wanna cut the budget, cut it in the articles, don't wait for this, for the labels.
Further discussion before we go? Yes, sir.
That was the purpose I had when I asked about the early budget. That is to say, if the selectmen can provide the information, for example, that Ed provided, uh, people would feel a little bit more confident about issues like this. You've gone through this process of making sure that you're not just arbitrarily transferring what we paid last year to this year. And that transparency puts my money that you've been there.
Further discussion?
So it's gonna be determined by three votes?
Yeah, by at least three votes.
At least three.
Everybody can come up here if they want to, but a minimum of three people have to vote. That's something out of the question. We ready to vote? We have some hearty souls come up here. Then you all have to vote either yes or no. Does everybody vote on Article forty-four with two thousand? Okay, voting on Article forty-four is close. Danielle is going to, uh, count the votes. Article, this, this is a standard article in every town, state, and maybe usually it's tone of teeth to get three people to get out of the chair. They always put it at the end, the people are so stiff, they won't, don't wanna have to stand up. But, uh. Parsons Field is the winner in participation of this particular election.
And keep Danielle on her toes.
Yeah, well, keep Danielle busy. For those who don't know, Danielle was the, selectman's assistant, were you? In Baldwin, Danielle?
Yes.
Danielle was selectman's assistant over in Baldwin for a number of years, did a good job over there. And you guys still are back. Roger Hall. Roger Hall.
Can I just say?
We're living with a.
Glad you have it.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you very much. Nine yes, four no.
Nine yes, four no. Article forty-four is accepted by a written vote. And again, thank you. Article forty-five, to see if the town will vote to reallocate eighteen thousand dollars in Aqua Funds for the purchase and installation of a hot water heater. Do we have a motion?
I move.
Yes, sir.
Eighteen thousand dollars, what kind of hot water heater is that?
Pretty good one. What kind of hot water, what kind of?
Well, I only paid a thousand, I'll, I'll, I'll actually donate one for him. No, it isn't a regular hot water heater, it's a coil off of the boiler. Uh, it's gonna have to be, uh, custom-made because you can't get it anymore. Uh, and it also involves tying. Uh, and, uh, it also involves tying in the clerk's office, uh, area because that used to be on its own hot water heaters, but it would be part of the heat.
I was criticized more than once for saying a hot water heater. Why do we have to eat it if it's already hot? Anyway, it's useful. Yes, sir? I understand you don't wanna run your boiler down in summer, but couldn't, couldn't you have gone with electric hot water heater and, and, uh, eliminate the, the cost of this?
I did a cost analysis on that, actually, just recently, 'cause I figured that question would come up. And my estimate was that it would cost, it's a circulating system. So it burns energy in the circulation. My estimate was that it would be about $5,000 in electricity costs annually. So we make up this amount pretty quickly.
Do you guys have your generator installed yet?
Oh, yeah.
So you could use this during coffee, or even the generator.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Further discussion?
When I put my system in, the plumber, local plumber, I had, never told me that I should test my water for hardness. It turns out if the water test is exceed the number four, those coils get very fast corroded and don't work well. I would suggest that we at least get our water tested before we do that.
We do test it, but I don't know about hardness.
Yeah, I mean, that, I was shocked when I found out that if the water hardness exceeds four, they're gonna ruin that kind of water heater.
This is taken under advisement, I can tell, yes.
So how many hot water spigots are in this building? And then how many do we really need?
There's at least one in every room, and a couple of bathrooms here. And this bathroom has showers, which we need for when everybody else is out of power and we open up. There's kitchen back here that we needed at. I don't know the number. I mean, that's right, kitchen has dishwasher, it has washing sinks. And I don't know the actual number, but I guess a dozen.
Yes, so you're saying that this hot water heater's gotta be fixed?
Yeah.
So if its pots can't be gauged, and it has to be many of, you know, pots made to fix it, and, uh, what's gonna happen when it cracks out again? And whether the, if, I, and you said that, you could get a pot, something like $5,000, say, uh, what was that about the electric hot water heater?
If you used an electric hot water heater, my estimate was that it would cost about $5,000 a year in electricity to run that water heater.
All right, so we'll spend eighteen thousand to fix it, and then if it breaks again, and we gotta find a new platter, it'd be better to kinda find a whole new water heater system and fix it up and it's obsolete?
The system, let's see, the system was put in in 1986. It worked, I believe, until shortly before we got the building in 2012. Uh, if we get half that time, I guess we'll have to replace the boiler before that.
Eric?
Do we know how much it's gonna cost in propane to run the boiler?
Nothing. You wanna know about fuel oil, though?
Um, we need...
Oil. Uh, haven't calculated that. It runs on number two. It's not propane.
I'll get to your second, Cliff. I saw Jeffrey's hand first.
Yep. Um, so this hot water tank, um, does it, do we need a new boiler? I wanted to say, if we need a new boiler, how, how much if we, if I'm the dad or if I, you know, I don't understand, don't quote.
No, no, that's right. The, the, you, we can't, no, the coil goes inside the boiler. It's just a separate water loop, similar to the heating loop, but smaller and literally inside the boiler.
But if we put this new hot water tank into the boiler, and then we have to replace the boiler, would that be a waste, you know, is that gonna be just a waste of money to do that now?
Call it a waste? I don't think it is, but, yeah, we couldn't use it.
Yeah, maybe not a waste. So it's just where, you know, wherever that we're gonna buy a water heater, and then the boiler goes, and then that hot, hot water heater can't be used with the new boiler. And, and I heard the word propane going. I did notice in one of the, the articles, it's just heating oil, but it should be broken down to propane and number two heating oil. Because we don't know how much money we spend on propane, because it's, it's in a, a eating oil column, and it should be propane. This way, here, we know how much money we're spending on the generator. That's all.
Yes, if I can just address that. We haven't refilled the tank since we got it here, so we haven't spent anything on propane except for the initial, uh, fill.
No, I, I get that, but it should be a separate article. And that propane should be moved out of the playground.
We can do that. I don't know about that.
Well, should that have been put in there?
Further discussion on the matter of hot water? Eric, Eric Dunn. Uh-oh, Cliff, sorry.
Okay. That's all right. Um, I do think retrofitting a 1986 system is not the way to go. They have heat pump water heaters now that are super efficient, using electricity. Do you inquire about a heat pump system? You just said electricity. So I don't, I'm assuming you didn't inquire about the heat pump?
Well, I did the calculation.
Um, based on a heat, heat pump, a new?
Based on a, a full electric.
Resistance electric.
Yeah.
This is special, this is a special water heater.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I have one in my house. The problem is with the circulating system, I don't think the heat pump could keep up with it. I really don't. Because it, it must have twenty or thirty gallons in the loop, and that's circulating to keep it warm. So who's...
You're not a, a water move, you know. So who gave you with your estimate? How did you decide with that heat pump water system?
I figured out how long? Well, I started with how much energy a typical water heater uses. I think it's 3,300 watts. I said, okay, we need that for half a year when the furnace, the boiler is not running anyways. Uh, maybe it would run half time, so I think I used, I don't recall, 35 or 40 percent of the time, and just multiplied it down, and then the rate per kilowatt hour.
I think we have to start to look beyond the old technologies and get further information from experts who deal with heat pump water systems and heat pumps. I think we have to look beyond the old technology. You have to retrofit or rebuild and see what's out there that can work. And I think it's out there that can work. Just have a little further.
Wait in the back corner, sir.
David, I appreciate your efforts, and this raises the same question that, uh, Cliff mentioned. Um, looking at that old boiler and everything else, and again, I don't, I'm not an expert or even informed on this. I'm thinking, what about on-demand, uh, an on-demand system? And of course, my favorite thing that routinely gets rejected is we've got that huge area by our community garden that somehow we should have filled with solar panels. I certainly pay no electric bill because of my solar panels. And that's in line with Cliff's suggestion that there's a loss coming down. And, uh, it's a lot of work for you guys, but it may be, it may be as little as that number of times.
I agree. I, I think we need this in the interim. All right, Jeff?
Well, before you mention solar, I was saying, saying, thinking the same thing. We have these solar panels, so, you know, that, didn't it decrease the $5,000? Or is that based on just a regular bill?
They're sized for our regular bill.
With the solar panels?
With what?
With it including the solar panels.
That's what I'm saying, the solar panels are sized.
So if we didn't have the solar panels, it would be probably even a lot more?
Well, no, because the, assuming the solar panels are already maxed out with what we have, the water heater would be on top at, at full fronts.
All right, so we're maxed out on our solar panels?
Yeah.
Good to know.
Any further discussion on hot water? Eric Dunn, all those in favor of Article 45 to reallocate $18,000 in aqua funds for purchase and installation of a hot water heater? Please raise your hand. Okay, those oppose. Okay, I'm gonna have to do a count. Okay, let's see, those in favor? About nineteen. Those oppose. I'm showing nineteen in favor and seven opposed. Article 14 is accepted. Uh, Article 46. To see if the town will vote to adopt the comprehensive plan completed by the comprehensive planning committee in August of 2024. Do we have a motion?
No vote.
Is a discussion. Eric Dunn, all those in favor of Article 46, called plan. Raise your hand. Those oppose. The article is accepted. I hope all those votes, then easy and long. Article 47, it will. Article 47, to see if the town will vote to change the name of the Kesar Falls Bridge to the Kesar Falls Veterans Memorial Bridge. Do we, you have a motion?
No vote.
Vote second and discussion. Yes, sir?
That is the bridge right there in Deep Falls. That's the bridge right there in Deep Falls.
Yeah, at the mill, yeah.
How are we able to walk that across it in the border? Porter agreeable?
Yep.
Jen?
Um, Porter did agree to the name change with a lot of discussion.
They agree with the name change.
Well, they, it was voted in.
Okay. Part of that bridge actually belongs to Porter.
Yes, and Porter did, did vote to, to do that at their end of the town meeting.
But my, my question was, are they agreeable? They have, or go ahead and do it.
I, I can confirm that I moderated a meeting over the Wednesday evening, and known that this article will be on here. Just for information, I asked their, their selectmen, and he said, yep, we did, so. Okay. Further discuss, yes, David?
Um, I have mixed feelings about this. Uh, in 2009, we did the 911 addressing, and the people in Kesar Falls were just up in arms because the Kesar Falls Post Office was now gonna be the Parsons Field Post Office. And what the heck were they gonna do? What's happening with Kesar Falls? And yes, the name still has Kesar Falls in it, but I think it dilutes that Kesar Falls history a little more, and so I'm recommending against this.
Yes?
I like the idea because it keeps Kesar Falls alive.
Further discussion on the bridge in Kesar Falls? Yes?
I'm not from Parsons Field, so...
You are, Calista?
I am.
Um, I, I, I've gotta have to do something. Uh, Calista is, I believe, the sponsor of this program. She is not a, a registered voter or, or even fortunate enough to be a resident of Parsons Field. By state law, we need a two-thirds vote of the House to allow any person from out of town to speak. If there is no objection, can we have unanimous consent?
Yeah.
Calista, you may speak. And please speak very loud.
Okay, I'll do my best. Um, as I was speaking about Porter, uh, Porter agreed to this right away, and, and liked the idea of it being called Kesar Falls Veterans Memorial Bridge. And I've been working on this program for about two years now, and I've been working with senators and state main, and so, and right now, if today this is approved, this will be the 12th town that has approved of naming a bridge in a town after our veterans. And, and it would be 10, uh, bridges that will be named, because I have one other, uh, town, um, Sandal Falls Bridge. It's, uh, shared by Hollis and Buxton, and they approved of it right away, and so that's gonna be changed. And so, uh, hopefully that you guys will vote this in. It's for our veterans, and, uh, and I've already spoken to some of them, being a member of On Flight Main. If you've heard On Flight Main, I'm a member with them. And so veterans come in, and, and I speak to them about the bridges. They can't believe that this is being done for them. They really appreciate everything that's been done so far. And, and I appreciate the select people here in all the towns that I've gone to. You've just been so respectful through all of this, and so I hope that everybody would, would give this a vote because it's for our veterans. And it's a very little thing for what they have done to us and for us, and this is why I keep doing this. And I have just been going all, for the last three months, uh, to selectmen's meetings, and I have more than I'm going to. Go around, saw, go different. And so it looks pretty good that, or maybe there'll be 20 by the time I get through doing this. And, and just a little get bit again for our veterans to what they have done for us. And so I appreciate you listening to me, and so hopefully you'll wanna vote it in, and we'll get another bridge.
Thank you, Calista. Any further discussion on the bridge in Kesar Falls area?
Not the bridge. I just wanna say that I'm very disappointed that the select board did not dedicate a person to the front page. We get looms.
Okay, that's a little off topic.
I know, but I just had to say it's...
I know.
Because we've done it every other week.
Yes, sir.
Every other year.
Elaborate. You said you had mixed feelings, and, uh, I think there's more to your reasoning than you said. Do you have anything more to add?
No, well, I'll, I'll add. First of all, I don't wanna be disrespectful to any veterans. I certainly appreciate everything they did. Um, there is a veterans memorial park right next to the bridge in Porter. A very nice, clean park. Um, and I just wanna respect the people in Kesar Falls who think that Kesar Falls should be Kesar Falls, and not Kesar Falls Memorial Veterans Bridge, or Veterans Memorial. Yeah, you're right. Kesar Falls is still there. I just can't argue that. And it just goes...
Further discussion, there's no more from Kesar Falls here.
Briefly, Calista?
Yeah, there are.
Parsons Field.
Briefly, very briefly, Calista?
Yeah, and one of the things about this, DOT will put the signs up at each end of the bridge. It will be called the Kesar Falls Veterans Memorial Bridge. And so when people drive by, they're gonna see it. Otherwise, all these bridges, none of the bridges have names except for the ones that I've been going to right now. So this is, this will be so much better when you drive, cross that bridge and see the name.
So the state may is gonna pay for it, is what you're saying? The sign?
And the cost will, it won't cost those, uh, townspeople anything.
Yes?
I'm married to a veteran. I live with the veteran. I think it should be changed.
You think it should be changed? Oh, so you're in favor of the article?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Further discussion on Article 47, the bridge in Kesar Falls? Yes, sir?
You have to remember that Key to Fall, that's where they go bring the water.
Yep.
It should come both sides of the river, then the old, the old Key to Fall building.
Yep.
And it's all power.
Yep.
Yep. Anything else before we vote? Eric Dunn, all those in favor of Article 47 as presented, please raise your hand. Those oppose. The article is accepted. Before we move on, again, I'd like to, uh, thank Ed for, for his work. I've been moderating a town meeting here in Kesar Falls three or four years.
Where?
Uh, yeah. We got Kesar Falls on here. Here in Parsons Field for a few years. Ed's always been helpful, from the know. Your town is lucky, it's fortunate to have such people serving you in government. They don't get paid with their work. At this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
No vote.
Then vote with second. A motion to adjourn is not debatable. All those in favor of adjournment, please raise your hand. Those oppose.